Good morning Bardstown in Nelson County and welcome to Bradford and Brooks. Jim Brooks and Margie Bradford are with you this beautiful sunny morning in downtown Bardstown. Margie, how are you this morning?
Well Jim, I'm doing pretty well except I'm a little upset this morning. Somebody came by and took down and stole my political sign which I didn't think was very nice of them.
Now you had the like the large one, didn't you?
Yes, I did. That's the second time it's been attacked. The first time they just took it down and wanted it up. I got it put back up and sometime during the night somebody came by and took the whole thing so which I am reporting to the police by the way.
Right. Well, I don't follow Facebook much but I know there's a lot of that sort of vandalism and going on with political signs.
Well, it gives politics a bad name because that's really destroying someone's right to the First Amendment rights.
Right.
To be able to express their political opinion. I don't go tearing anybody else's signs down. Why should they tear mine down?
Well, I'll, you know, we could do a show on that.
Well, we could. If it keeps up, we probably will.
It's really, I don't know why somebody wants to spend their time to do it.
I don't either.
You know, it just doesn't make sense. We all have a right to support, you know, the candidates that we wished, you know.
Exactly, and they wouldn't want anybody tearing their signs down, so.
And it's not really the monetary value, it's just the aggravation that somebody felt it was so important to vandalize or remove a sign that they stopped a car, got out in the middle of the night to do it.
And I'm on a busy street, very busy.
Well, you are. I'm surprised somebody stopped to do it on that street.
Well, they did, believe me, they did. I've got the empty signpost there to prove it.
Well, some people have been putting up cameras to watch their sign.
I am considering that.
Well, how many weeks away are we now, Margie? Four, something like four.
It seems like an eternity, but it's about four, yeah. It's a little over, it's about four weeks, yeah.
Well, it's sad we have to resort to security cameras on political signs, you know.
It really is, but I mean, I've been, I've been, I've been politically active for a long time, working for the candidates of my choice with other people working for the candidates of their choice. And I've never really seen anything like this. I mean, you know, we would agree to disagree, support our candidates and, you know, and then when it was all over with shake hands, whoever was elected was elected and too bad, try again the next time.
Right, right.
So, I just have a hard time understanding the reasons that people would do that.
Well, I think it speaks to the level of, I don't know, meanness, you know, that people are so involved in their, in the political discussions and that they're willing to infringe on somebody else's right, you know, and I, I don't know, I think, being a Republican, I hate to say it, but I think it kind of, it stems from the candidates themselves.
I think it does.
Because they, you know, well, we could devote another show to that.
Yeah, we could do, we could do a whole show on that.
Yeah, we've got a.
But anyway, I am reporting it to the police because, because, I mean, I let it go the first time.
Right.
But it is just something that needs to be reported to the police and I'm going to do everything I can to catch who did it.
Right. All right, well, Margie, we have a very special studio guest with us today. Ms. Diane Berry, and Diane Berry, you represent the second, is it second?
Yes.
Okay. Second Magisterial District in Nelson County. And she told me before the show, this is your 12th year.
Yes, sir.
As a board member.
As a board member.
And, and it's, you know, sometimes I wonder why people want to be board members, you know, but, you know, in past years, sometimes it doesn't, it doesn't draw a lot of people in. There's no big salary, you know, no paid trips to Las Vegas.
Let's put it, no salary.
Right, right, right. I mean, and really, it's, you're working on the behalf of the taxpayers, you know.
Right, exactly.
And it's, there's not a lot of rewards there, you know, and, you know, and I think both districts generally have benefited from people who are, have an interest in improving education, who want to be on the board. And that's the, that's the goal.
Well, that's been, that's the, that's the goal standard.
Yes.
Right, right.
Yes.
Well, Diane, tell us a little bit, of course, I mean, I covered school board for a while.
Yes, she did.
And just give you a chance to tell our listeners a little bit about yourself and why you want to return to the board.
Yes, Jim. To begin with, I'm a product of the Nelson County Public School System. That being said, I've worked in the system in all three phases, elementary, middle, and high school.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I've been six years on the Board of Directors of the Kentucky School Board Association. I also serve presently appointed to the Educational Professional Standards Board, that's a mouthful, yes, EPSB, and I served at different phases when the kids were in school, they graduated from the county system, and also when I worked almost 15 years in the Nelson County School System, like I said, at all three levels. So, I enjoyed it. I enjoy, I enjoy seeing the kids graduate and what is their future, what do they propose or what do they think they want to do as opposed to what they know they don't want to do.
Right.
So, my, I want to return to the board, I want to continue our educational endeavors forward, including college as well as work. And there's just a lot of, we need to finish our job, we need to work on it harder.
The, we talked before the show, how education has changed since, you know, I was in high school. And, you know, I tell my son, even my son, I tell him what's going on, and he's like, I'd like to be in high school again, you know, because, you know, I talk about, well, of course, that's 40 years ago when I was in high school and all the opportunities our young people have in education and pathways. And we're telling my son about it and he's like, I'd like to go back to take advantage of that, you know, because, I mean, education's kind of, it's a moving target, you know, and it evolves quickly.
Very quick.
And it's, I don't know, I think we have, I think our school systems here are really quality, places for quality education.
Yes. I know in the county system, we have five different avenues that these students can take. And when I'm, the first one is collaboration, which the kids go to a different place, you can go to ETC T. You also have, we also have online learners, we have work-based study, of course, and then we have what they are calling microschools now, which involves a group of students going somewhere and a concentration on that certain subject. I've enjoyed going over to the ATC and you're talking about robotics and those kind of wonderful, wonderful. They, last school year, they went to, we went to Morehead to compete in the state. It was just amazing. I couldn't get over it when I said, you can't, I mean, they're kids doing this work that these grownups do, what we consider grownups. College kids, I was just floored, I was floored. It was a great place to be. I love the ATC, I think it's very important that we, you know, we got a grant from the state, $10 million. And you can see the fence, fences going up out there. I just think it's golden opportunities we have for these kids and the more that we can help escalate that higher and higher, that's what I want.
Now, my son, years ago, was, when he went to the ATC for computer, what, a computer repair and computer science sort of stuff, and the classes at that time participated in an annual robotics contest at Western. And it was fascinating to watch as a parent because these kids had to solve problems and the creativity and unique ways of thinking that they brought to that was just, you know, it wasn't like study a book and we'll do a test next week.
No.
I mean, this was critical thinking and problem solving and, and they had that opportunity and collaboration among themselves, you know, what's the best idea, how do we do this? Because the robotics competition, for those who haven't seen one, they're given different tasks that their robot has to be able to complete. And I will tell you that the team my son was on, they did some, talk about thinking out of the box. It was amazing, the ideas they had and implemented and were successful with. Because I think the, the one year he went down, he was in, the tutor team won first place and I think it was second place the next year. But, and then, of course, they're participating, it's teams from all over the area and, and seeing those guys and how they, you know, everybody looks at a problem differently.
Yes.
It was amazing. Of course, that's kind of echoes real life.
Yes.
You know, we all go, part of an organization, you all have, everybody has their own idea or ideas to share on how to reach the same goal.
Yes. I just noticed when I went in the classroom, it was a group of students and they were asking each other, now how can we improve this or how can we do this? I think it teaches you to be a part of a team and even a leader, you know, people, we figure out like they used to put groups together and you did a, you know, presentation and, and there was always the one that you knew was the leader, you know, and nobody, and everybody knew it. You didn't have to stand there and argue about it, you knew who your leader was and you looked at that leader and then they, they gained perspective on how to engage with a group of people. Yeah.
Yeah, that, of course, now even in college, my sons, in programming classes, he usually, they're involved in team, doing work on a team, dividing responsibilities. And all I tell you, the worst thing ever happens to him is he has a partner who's not pulling their weight. And he, he calls me up at night in frustration, he's like, Daddy, I can't do anything with this guy, he's not pulling his weight. And I said, well, you know what you have to do. If he won't do it, one of y'all is going to have to pull, you know, pick up the slack. I know you don't want to, it's not your job, you know, but I mean, that's, that's real life.
Yes, it is.
Sometimes you have that situation.
Same has happened to my kid, that they would come home, Mama, what in the world? And I'm going, Courtney, you know what to do. That's just the way it is, that's life.
Exactly.
Yes, sir.
Exactly. Well, Diane, let's talk a little bit about the recent past, if that's okay.
Okay.
I guess since, what, early 2023, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of debate on the board. And I think the, the board, basically around community campus, of course, this is going back, you know, community campus began, what, 2021?
Three.
And then came to the board in 2022.
Two.
And then, and then the new board members came on in 2023.
Three.
Yeah. And you have taken an incredible amount of heat.
Yes, sir.
For the decisions you've made and, and, you know, there's, I don't think there's any good way to, you know, to, some decisions people aren't going to like anyway, you know, that kind of comes with the job. But you've been adamant about where you, where you stand.
Yes, sir.
Now, and what I really want to do is jump from that, I know that, just how things are going on the board now, you know, what are the relationships, has it improved? Because, I mean, ultimately, your goal as a board member is still moving, pushing education forward. There's, that's, that's a constant.
That is what we do, that's to make sure our students deserve the best education that's afforded to them.
Right.
And right now, it's, I'll be honest, right now, it's sort of, we're waiting. We're waiting because we have New Haven to develop.
That's right.
We also have the ATC in development and we have New Haven School in development. So, we've got three, we've got three projects going, so we don't want to overload.
Right.
You know, you can only bond out so much, you can only do so much you can do. So, we're just gonna, and everybody's getting along, I mean, you know, as far as, we're just waiting for the right time to, for our next step.
Right.
Yes.
Well, I guess you have to get those projects underway.
Yes, sir.
What's, is there a completion date anticipated for the ATC remodeling?
Well, I wish it had been done tomorrow, but it's not going to. I'm not sure what the timetable is simply because it's, you know, how the construction is, the weather and how fast we got started, which, you know, there's a lot of, I would say, and not that I've ever built an, onto an ATC or anything, but I would think it was going along, we haven't heard any hiccups yet, we haven't gotten any yet.
No change orders yet.
Not yet. I look for them to come, yes.
But they're kind of, kind of inevitable, you know.
Yeah, at every project, every project.
Now, it's encouraging that New Haven's finally getting some attention.
Yes, sir.
And it's a great, great move.
It is. They've deserved, it's been on that list for 20 years and.
What are they doing?
They're reimagining the school to be a P through five and the students will not have to walk in the rain, snow, sleet, and hail to go over to their gymnasium. So, that will be more than a walkway, I think there, the plan is to put an office or some kind of a rooms through there. And so, that'll give that school some breathing room and some just school.
But it, does it go to the fifth grade now?
It goes to, yeah, yes ma'am, because we moved the sixth, seventh, and eighth to Old Kentucky Home Middle School and that relieved New Haven to add preschool and anything they, and plus they may have an extra room for some kind of other program. But I went down and, I went to New Haven and I talked to the principal and we, I took a little tour and it seems like it'll really work really, really well for those students and teachers.
That didn't crowd them up at the other school, having, adding that number of students?
No, ma'am. Got, we put Boston Middle School at Old Kentucky Home too. That school holds 711 and there's only a little over 600. So, they had a whole hallway empty last school year. So, New Haven needed the help, Boston was overcrowded.
Right.
So, I said, that's it, we're going to put these kids over to Kentucky Home and from what I understand, it's gone great. I've not had one complaint, there's enough students in the school now where you can offer those advanced classes or those students feel like they're getting all the education advantages that we can give these kids and that's what they need.
Well, that was kind of the point back when they were talking about community campus was the greater number of kids together can get, have equal access to all the education opportunities. And so, that, you know, I didn't really think about it, I knew that the board had voted to move those kids to OKH, but, well, I'm glad that's working out and because it was necessary really, you couldn't do anything in New Haven with, without moving those students.
No, we couldn't and we, in Boston, the kids were in the hallway. So, I mean, I saw kids, little, little ones in the hallway and in the lunchroom. So, it was best to go ahead and move those kids out so they've got plenty of room at Boston. The community campus wise, my problem with that is that school can hold 1,000, okay? At the time when that community campus was even spoken of, there was two high schools less than full, 60%, 67% or less I want to use. And I'm thinking, why do we want to do that when we can put kids to fill the school and save the taxpayers money? And yet, our students will be in a place to, they will have enough, in a class to hold a class instead of six here, seven here and, you know, you just need to use, I felt like we need to use the space that we have available, we can use that money for something else. I'm not in favor of it and I have, I voted back in 21, no, I'm not. I think we need to use our resources we have now. Then if we have a big spurt of growth, we'll deal with it then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, having been a school board member.
Yes, ma'am, I remember.
I know that you, but you really do need to plan for down the road for, for your increases.
But you know that.
And that takes, you know, really studying it and getting into it. That, I just have a feeling that way, that you need to, and, and construction costs are less now than they will be down the road. I mean, it's a given, everything's going to cost more as it goes down the road.
Yes, we found that out really quick. When, when the cost went to like 40 million or 35 million, which started out to be 20 or 19. That's just the way it is, everything goes up.
Well, the pandemic accelerated that because of supply line.
Yes.
Issues.
Yes.
And so, that was, that made a big difference.
And with these, and the thing that I say now that I want, I wanted people to understand in a meeting is, you know, when they're adding one high school, in the future, one high school, Nelson County High School will be at one high school and hold 14, about 1450, but you don't hold those many kids every day. You've got those five, five extensions that those kids won't be at school.
Right.
If you, if you take your attendance, let's say Cardinal Crew or, or out to Thomas Nelson, they're the houses, you take that attendance, you take lunch attendance, or you take sixth period and seventh period at the Thomas Nelson, you're not going to have, you can, you can throw cartwheels down the main hallway, that's how least the kids are. You look at the parking lot when you're allowed to drive and there is not a whole lot of cars. The kids are doing their thing and that's what you want, but there's, the money, it's using our resources that we have now instead of creating, you know, millions of dollars that all, that's a burden on, well, look at your tax bill now. Or maybe not look at your tax bill.
I don't like looking at it.
No, I don't like looking at mine either, but almost $600 of mine is school tax. And you think, gosh, come on, we've got to be more resourceful, we've got to use what we can to, to make it work. And I think that's a better way.
Diane, the, the General Assembly, what, year before last, voted to allow the bourbon industry to, to allow the bourbon tax to go away. And I used to remember the numbers, but the county school district, was it more than, was it right at $2 million?
A little, uh-huh.
Yeah, it was a lot, so was Bardstown's was less, of course, a smaller district, but it's a considerable amount of money.
Right. And I'm sure there've been discussions on, because fortunately, rather than chopping it off one year from the next, it's been stretched out, but still, that's another pressure.
Right.
On the, on the school budget and, you know, and.
We have to come up with that money.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. If it does, yeah, if you're not getting it from one source, you have to get it from another.
And I'm not looking for it today, I'm looking on years down the road when it would have increased.
Yeah.
And now we're not going to get that money.
Right.
And then you think, okay, how can we absorb that money, that loss in our, in our district?
It's going to come from the local.
Yeah, local taxes.
It's going to come from the local taxpayers.
Yes, ma'am, it sure will.
Now, the, and I, in most cases, the school districts, well, like a lot of entities, they're limited to a 4% revenue increase. Well, you know, from my past, just, you know, covering school board, a 4% revenue increase barely, may not even cover the increase, the normal increase is step raises.
Right.
And other expenses because we know how much more, how much more expensive things are now.
It's the floor, not, it's the floor, not the ceiling.
Well, it was intended to be the floor.
Right.
But it's pretty much been the ceiling.
Right, but it's, that's what it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be the floor.
But anyway, that's, that's just one of the pressures on, on the school board and budgeting and I will tell you, and I've told other people this, the, our local school districts have finance people in place who can explain finances reasonably well that even a journalist like me can understand, understand it. Now, now, sometimes you're getting, they get down in the weeds and it's like, you know, like, I couldn't explain how the C formula works.
Well, nobody else can either.
Nobody can explain how the C formula works.
Yeah, no one else can either. All we know is if it increases or decreases and then we have to make up the difference.
Right. And in the, from 2008 till now, and I don't know about the last year or so, but the amount of the school district's budgets, as far as the balance between state money and local tax money, years ago, it was, you had more state revenue coming in and now it's exactly the opposite and districts require more. The more their budget is, comes from the local tax dollars.
And what does the constitution say?
Well, I can't quote it, but it's.
Well, I can't quote it either, but it's our responsibility, the state's responsibility to make sure.
It is the state.
It is the states.
Yes, it's the state.
And they're not pulling their weight either.
That's the reason that the 1990 law came about because they were sued by local school districts that, that were receiving, were receiving very little money in regard to other school districts because they didn't have the tax base. And so, the legislature lost that battle and, and what they did was use it to not only, I mean, used it to the advantage really of the whole education system to try to equalize that funding and, and came up with a lot of other things like the friskies and, you know, ways to help students who are struggling and who are, don't have the same socioeconomic advantages that others. So, I always said, if I, if I ever lost a lawsuit, I'd hope I'd lose it like the state legislature did.
Well, I went to a summit for students with disabilities and as you well know, there's different programs, there is more than I thought of these programs. There's got to be eight different programs that these kids can be entered into as soon as they're identified with a 504 or 100, you know, as long as they're identified. And I was just amazed that, because we don't know about that.
No.
We, we don't know about that. We're, we're hopeful that we can use those programs, yes, we can, but we have a district person and we have a school person and it's amazing. We, I had no clue. I knew three of them, but I didn't know there was so many of them. So, I've learned a lot in that, at that summit last week.
All right, we need to take a break right now for some commercial messages. You're listening to Bradford and Brooks and Margie and I, special guest Diane Berry, who represents the second Magisterial District on the Nelson County Board of Education. And on the November ballot, she and others will be seeking either election or reelection. And we will be back with our conversation with Diane in just a moment, so please stay tuned. All right, you're back with Bradford and Brooks, Jim Brooks and Margie Bradford and our very special studio guest is Diane Berry. Diane is the, represents the second district on the Nelson County Board of Education. And Diane, if it's, I wanted to ask you a little bit about more recent events. The, and I don't remember the timeline, but the board wanted to remove the superintendent, and I can't remember how many, how many months ago that was, but the interim commissioner of education didn't, disagreed. And so, my question is, I'm wondering, how, how the relationship between the board and superintendent has been because that can be critical as getting things done, you know. But I was just curious if you give, just from your perspective, not representing or speaking as the whole board, but, you know, because there'd been, you know, going to the board meetings, you know, sometimes the comment period would last extensive, you know, and, you know, and you and I remember when sometimes no one was at a board meeting to speak.
Yes.
You know, so, but anyway, I just, just curious, just wondering how, how that relationship is going because I know it was contentious for a while.
Yes, Jim, I think it's going really well because we have dropped that issue for right now and we're, we're trying to make the three, the three bills we've got going now the best that we can do. And I don't anticipate any problems with any of that. I think we, you know, we're, we're to the point where we want to do what's best for our kids and not sit there and talk about stuff that has nothing to do with. for our kids and not sit there and talk about stuff that has nothing to do with students.
Right.
And that's what you've got to do. You've got to turn the rest of the stuff off after they get through with open comment, and you've got to carry on. And I think we've done an excellent job in that. Yes.
Excellent. The, now, and again, my, my timeline in my brain's a little fuzzy. But at one point, the board decided to shorten the comment period, because it was going, I don't know, more than two hours.
Yes, sir.
And which made for some extremely long board meetings before you could even get into the heart of what you all were trying to do. Is that still the case? Is there a limit on public input still at the board meetings?
Yes, sir. The law, our rules are, the law is fifteen minutes and we're given thirty, because that way, you have to sign up through the website, is what I understand. I think that's plenty of time to us standing there. If you recall, the first two or three, no, the first six months, we were there for one time, two hours. And the state says, wait a minute, you know, because somebody was watching. Somebody was watching. And so I said, that's enough. We, we can't do that. We, we just can't do that. It's not right. You know, because they were getting up and saying virtually the same thing. And I don't have a problem with that. You've got a voice, you use it. But let's do it, let's do it at a, a time, a timely time. And thirty minutes now. What it is generally, the, as Margie, as you well know, your, your chairman of the board rules the meeting. And when I got, it was my turn to be chairman, I asked our lawyer, I said, we have to do something here, because it was, like you said, rather intense. So he said, Diane, you can do whatever. You, you carry the meeting. So we asked the policy at K S B A, and she said, whatever he says goes. So we cut it to thirty minutes. And it's really worked out well. I mean, there's, there's not as many people getting up and saying things, making comments, open comments. But I think it's helped to, we've got the meeting done, because some of our meetings are long. It's, it is.
But still, people still attend.
And people still attend. And can, and if you want to say something, you can turn it in to the secretary and they will put that on in the minutes, that you, what you have said or want to say. Yes.
Your, your tenure as, as board chair, I, I don't think anybody could envy that.
I made it through.
You did. Yes, you did. And, and, you know, I just remember how contentious things, things were. But, but anyway, but you, you, would you do, well, of course, the chair position kind of rotates among the board. Will you do it again if asked?
You have to get in there with them. You have to get in there with them. You know, I, I know people are really, you really are challenged, not challenged, but you, you love what you do. I mean, everybody has a stand that they want to take on a subject. Everybody. You give them the, give them their voice, let them say it. And then you have to do what's right for students. It's not just, you know, and we have to keep our teachers. We need to retain our teachers. We have personal development that needs to be done that the state has cut. We've got things that they've cut for teachers, that you've got to make those teachers feel welcome and feel like we want to keep them too.
What is, seeking to return to the board, what, if you could wish things into existence, what, what do you think, what's a district need, do you think, that the board, of course, it sounds like you all have a full plate with construction projects already. Are there other needs you think that, that would be nice to be able to, to meet or address, you know, as board?
Yes, Jim, that's a good one. I, I like that. I think if, when we get these projects done, there's a lot of updating at the high school. We cannot, we cannot keep that, just saying, okay, we've got to do that. We've got heating, air, bathrooms. We have classroom, they need new desks. You need a new system. I walked in one room and I heard this boom, and it was the heat and air. It was the heat coming on. I'm going, people, you know, come on, people. We've got to update that school.
Yeah, that can's been kicked down the road.
And too many times. But where I am not in favor of putting eighty million dollars a build onto that school and then knocking down the front part, the sixty nine part. I'm not in favor. We can make it work with, with the resources we have or can have to get that on, get that school updated.
Right. Well, it's, I can't imagine building new would be as affordable as renovating, you know. I mean, and I guess the, and I can remember more than a year ago, the, the list of updates that the county high school needed. And it's, and it's extensive, but how old's that building now? I mean, it opened in.
Sixty nine.
I was going to say seventy, but yeah.
It opened in fall sixty nine. I just think it's a, you know, we have much older schools in this state. In, in a lot of areas that you, you know, we're talking about eighty year old schools and a hundred, I've been in them for cheerleading. And there, they update, it won't cost eighty million dollars. Yeah, that's just my fear. I don't, we just don't need to do it. We've got, we've got enough things or items we need to check on our list. And then, and we'll make, we'll make it work. We'll make it work.
Well, what, what, what needs updating besides the air conditioning and the heating and?
The air, oh, the bath, or the plumbing. We have, you know, maybe put an office in the great hall and, and use our space. We, we, it's like your house, you know, you might redo your house every ten or fifteen year. You wouldn't do it every fifty, but everybody needs to modern, modernize. Like the library now, we, we don't use the library. You know, that can be used for something else. We very few times are in the library because of media center. You have your computer, you have your phone, and they consider that. I personally like a library. But then I was raised in the old way, in the stacks at school and stuff.
They don't read books anymore.
And they don't bring.
They don't read books anymore.
They don't read books. You read your phone or your iPad, you know, some, everybody's got a Chromebook in the county. So you, you.
I need to cross myself here.
Yep. Everybody's got, you know, now, our problem is, I think there's some spots still in Nelson County where they have to go to a library or you have to catch the wifi. But it's not impossible. You know, it's not impossible. Yeah.
Well, I will tell you that my wife's been fighting that fight with me since we got married, because when she married me, she also married my library. Because I have, I have my scholastic books I bought in sixth grade, you know, on my shelf. Now, Mike Mulligan and his steam shovel still near and dear to my heart.
Yes.
The.
Well, I, the thing is, I am, I am really happy to hear you say that, because I'm not quite that bad. But I do still have textbooks from my nursing school.
I've got textbooks from my college, yes.
So, but, but no, I, I'm glad to hear that there's somebody who is more deep, who's more deeply enshrined there than I am.
Well, my wife has been, we've been going, and now we have a, well, we call it the library at our house. And it's aligned with bookcases, of all her books, my books, and kids' books. But she has been working bookcase by bookcase to consolidate, you know, and so, and she'll go through and hold up a book. When's the last time you read this one? I'm like, that's not the point.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
You just, you just, you just have the security of knowing you can go in there and put your hands on that book, get it out and look it up.
Right. And my, actually, I have a cousin in Cleveland. And years ago, when I first got into journalism, she sent me some of her textbooks. And of course, journalism, and that's going back fifty years, I guess. And so very little in, in that, those textbooks. Oh, wow. Yeah, the landscape has sure changed, and they're antiques. But, but I will tell you that, and I like watching old movies that have newspapers, because that's the old way things are done. And, you know, I, I told my wife, they had an open house at the publications division down at Western. And I said, I'm going to go down there and ask them, where's their waxer? Where's all this, name all this equipment that's been obsolete for twenty years, you know, and tell them, how can you have a journalism department without all that? All that junk. But, but anyway, so this is your, see, how many terms? Let's see, twelve years is three terms.
Yes, sir.
So this will be your, be your fourth one. All right. You, you were the subject of, I'll, I'll call it character assassination. People were so angry with, with your decision not to support community campus. And, but, you know, it was all over the, I mean, criticism is one thing, not liking the decision. But it got so personal and so vile, that I had, you know, I don't think it was called for. We can, we can agree to disagree in a civil manner.
Well, I'm not going to lie. It was tough. It, it was tough. It was tough on my kids. It was tough. And, but like I told my daughters, when you sign on the dotted line, it's your job. And I'm not going to quit. You know, it's your job.
Well, I, yeah, I remember the, they were calling on you to resign and et cetera, et cetera. And I'm like, you know, that, and these were unprecedented things, you know, but you had been, your years on the board have been, you know, there'd been nothing like this before.
No, sir.
But, and that's kind of one reason I, I really got tired of all the vitriol and the hatefulness on social media. You know, it was like, it's, you know, it's just eating my brain away, you know, I need to, you know, we need to have positive, try to come up with something positive, because there's a way forward.
Oh, there is.
I mean, even if you want to keep, you know, if there's debate over keeping a school open or closing it, or which one, the order that they get renovated, you know, and there's places for those discussions.
Yes.
But anyway, just looking back, and this is kind of off the cuff, are any decision or anything you would do differently now than in the last, say, well, since January twenty twenty three, you know?
No. This is, this is a decision that, if you sit down and think about it, you know, whether than spending money, a huge sum of money, which will take us buku's of years to pay back. And what I know is if you take that kind of money, you can't build anything else until your tax, until you have used that money or paid down on it or what, because we still owe, at the time that was brought up, community campus, we still owe thirty million. So what do you do? You can't just say, okay, let's go for it. No, because you're going to put my children, my grandchildren, in a situation where they will always have to pay for something, for a huge sum of something, you know. I, I don't know, I don't regret anything. I have never voted against any initiatives that we have, that's come before the board, never, until that one.
Right.
And then I said, enough's enough. We cannot, we cannot use that kind of money to put people in such a burden. But we have to keep paying our teachers, you know, with the money we have. We have to keep students moving in the, in the direction for which they want to move, you know. And that's the point of, of a board, is your two jobs is to hire a lawyer and hire a superintendent. And other than that, we cannot interfere, other than in budget wise or something. But that was the only time I've ever said, no. That's been it. And I'm, I'm proud, I'm proud I said it. When a board rolled with different members, just so happens they felt the same way. And then I could say, okay, that, we're not going to do this. You know, you know, when you take a chance on, voting on new members to be put in a board, that's just the way it works. That's the way democracy is supposed to work. So I don't regret anything. No. My husband would tell you differently, but, yeah, my husband would tell you differently, but I don't.
Will you be taking part in the teachers forum that's scheduled?
Candidate forum.
No, I won't be in town.
Teachers. I said, teachers.
I know what you're talking about. I was asked, but I will not be in, I'm going to represent my family somewhere. So that family comes first, you know.
Well, the, I will say, well, the board has had a tough, a tough road to hoe since January. There's been just so much, so much disagreement with the public. And, and, I mean, one board member had his tires left. I mean, that's, you know, and I, you know, I understand the level of vitriol and, and, and that comes up at meetings, but that sort of act was just, that blew me away. I'm like.
Really?
Why would you, what sense does that make? What message does that send?
Well, it doesn't send a good message for your kids, for your sons or daughters to hear this. And it doesn't send a message of cooperation at all.
Right.
It's just, we're setting an example for our kids. And then you, I've looked at them, and they bring their kids to a meeting for a while. And I thought, oh, my goodness, that's not something good that you need your kids to hear, is the viciousness and the ugliness. As my mom, you say, the ugliness that's going on, on open comments when you bear down. And, and it's a law, you're not supposed to pick a person out that, and you well know too, Margie, you don't pick a person off the board and keep hammering them. You're supposed to, the board is addressed as one entity, not five different people, you know. They didn't understand that either until finally we had to say, hey, you can't do that. That's not what we're here for. You know, make your point. And just because your point is different than my point, doesn't, shouldn't give you the right to, to bear down on a person.
Well, we have about a minute left. Any final comments you want to, want to give our WBRT listeners?
I want all of you people in District Two to vote. But I, I want to thank you, District Two, for the twelve years I've had. And I look forward to really extending my term on the board, seeking the best education we can afford our kids. And I want to keep continuing to do that. And I thank you.
All right. Well, Diane, thank you for coming in today.
You're welcome.
We were happy to have the school board candidates. We'll have, I don't remember our schedule, Margie, but we will have.
Let's see, I can, I can tell you that very.
We'll have additional candidates coming up in the next couple of weeks.
Next week will be Jody Gilliland. And then the week after that will be Karen Lee. And we were unable to get scheduled Nicole, sorry.
Milburn.
Milburn, Nicole Milburn, because we, we couldn't find a date that was, she could come and that was open for us. So, but, you know, she was given an opportunity early on. But, you know, as time went by, we ran out of dates.
Right. Well, we will have a video of this and the other candidate interviews. They'll be posted on YouTube and Facebook and the Nelson County Gazette. So look for those coming up. Thanks for listening, everybody. And that's it for this week's Bradford and Brooks. Have a great week, everybody.